Good evening and welcome to the Bellingham City Council session for February 8th, 2016. We're going to take a little moment today, a moment of silence. I'm sure most of you have heard that last week we lost our wonderful Harriet Spanell, who was a tremendous community spokesperson and our senator and loved this location very much. So if we could all just take a moment for Harriet. We have one announcement this week. We will having a, on February 22nd, there will be a public hearing at 7:00 PM in council chambers to consider a redevelopment proposal for 315 West Holly Street. Bellingham City Council meets all requirements of the State of Washington Open Meetings Act. If you could all join me and have, we'd like to ask Greg Winters to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the Father, and to the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Here. Dan Hamel.
Here.
Jane Knutson.
Here.
Michael Liloquist.
Here.
Roxanne Murphy.
Here.
Pinky Vargas.
Here.
Terry Bornerman.
Here.
Michael, can you grab me the sign up sheet? We're going to move into our 15-minute public comment period, and I just want to remind everyone for both public comment and for our hearing this evening, that you have a three-minute time to speak. And if you could, please respect other people's time and be concise on our three minutes. And also, there is no cheering, no clapping. This is a safe place for everyone to have a moment to speak. So if you could consider that. And we are going to start with, our first speaker for public comment is Rick Hanon.
My name is Rick Hanon of the city of Bellingham. It's not working. Something's wrong.
Did you want to come downstairs, please? Because we need to record it for, thank you. And we'll work on getting that fixed.
Anyway, recently, I wrote a poem, and I'd like to recite the poem tonight. And don't worry, it's not a long poem, won't take three minutes. Now, the title of the poem is "Real Progress." So here goes. No more Obama, no more Hillary, no more Colonel Sanders, no more lies, no more fascism, no more race baiting, no more scams, no more lowlife, no more BS. Make America Great Again.
Thank you, Rick. And our next speaker, and if you could state your name when you come to the podium, is Andy Metzler? Is that right?
Okay.
And if I mispronounce your name, please do give it to us correctly.
All right, I'll try to buzz through this. My name's Andy Metzler. I'm representing your cab company. I live in Bellingham. We're talking about Uber tonight. By your definition stated in the Bellingham Municipal Code, it states, "Whereas transportation network company services are sufficiently distinct from taxi cab and for higher vehicle services as to warrant separate regulation." It next says in the next section, it is, "You chose to amend and adopt a new chapter, 6.55, to the municipal code in order to regulate the operations and transportation network companies in the city of Bellingham for the purpose of promoting the safety and welfare of the general public. My concern is, it's a border town, and there's nothing safe about it. And by separate regulation, it pretty much means no regulation or acceptance of such responsibility from the city. The first section states, 'It is expressly the purpose of this chapter to provide for and promote the safety and welfare of the general public and not to create or designate any particular class of persons who will or should be specially protected by its terms. Nothing contained in this chapter is intended nor shall be construed to create any liability on the part of the city or its employees for any injury or damage resulting in the failure of the licensee to comply with the provisions of this chapter.'" Says nothing about the city. By the definition set forth by the city of Bellingham, TNCs, as I'll call them, transportation network companies, the TNC drivers are operating as taxis, not just TNCs. Section 6.55.100, TNC drivers shall accept only rides arranged through the TNC's digital network, AKA the app, and shall not solicit or accept street hail. The fact of the matter is, is they are soliciting as well as passing out business cards with contact information using social media to build personal customer base, as well as a means for customers to book rides. I have also heard from some of our passengers that some TNC drivers will carry passengers without using the Uber app, which means there is no insurance coverage during the duration of this ride. As we taxi companies are required to maintain commercial insurance for each car, as well as a general liability as a blanket insurance, both of which are required by your regulations, both of which specifically indemnify the city of Bellingham and its council members from any liability should something happen. These TNC drivers are not required to carry the same commercial insurance, and being that they are not operating under the rules set forth by the city to allow TNCs to operate, not if, but when something happens, you, the city of Bellingham and its members, will be held accountable for not correcting this issue by simply requiring the TNCs to carry the same commercial insurance as the taxis, with the city being listed on the policy to be notified if the policy becomes delinquent or canceled. If you're going to allow them to continue operations as a taxi, they should follow under the same requirements set forth by the city for taxis, being that neither taxi or the TNCs generate enough money for the city to hire someone to regulate this, which, like I stated before, by your definitions and requirements, is impossible. And I think the Fair Trade Commission would agree."
Thank you, Andy. And you had immaculate timing. Our next speaker is Elizabeth Kilanowski.
Oh, you got that right. Ooh. Hi, I'm Elizabeth Kilan, can you hear me? Elizabeth Kilanowski from Bellingham. And I'm here as a citizen who supports Mount Baker Planned Parenthood, and I strongly, and I want to emphasize the strongly, support the resolution that you're voting on tonight. And I thank you very much for bringing it forward. In 1968, I was a 21-year-old unmarried woman just starting college in Minnesota. I had a boyfriend, and I wanted safe and effective birth control. Many women around my age or older can tell you horror stories about how hard it was, or almost impossible it was, not only to get a safe abortion, but to be able to get adequate birth control. I went to several doctors before I found one willing to prescribe birth controls for me, birth control pills for me. Over the next decades, I joined hundreds of thousands of women who petitioned, marched, demonstrated, and fought for our right to control our own bodies. We made progress, only to see now, here, 47 years later, women still often have trouble getting safe abortions, and in some places, even access to effective birth control. Older women like myself have watched with dismay as mostly white male legislators and religious fanatics have chipped away at what we fought for, for our younger sisters. We're rapidly going back to the days I well remember. The constant attacks on Planned Parenthood by the right in this country is making it more and more difficult for women to exercise their rights to safe, effective birth control and abortion. So I'm here today to ask you to strongly support this resolution. As you well know, Planned Parenthood provides not only reproductive services, but cancer screening, well-women exams, HIV screening and counseling, and other services. Planned Parenthood serves both women and men, and millions of people around the country are served by them. We need Planned Parenthood in our community. I'm proud to support them, and I feel it is my responsibility to do so. I stand with Planned Parenthood. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Elizabeth. The next team I have is Chris Erwin. On the list? Chris Erwin. Chris, quick question for you. It says aloha. Are you here for the, did you want to speak during the public hearing or the public comment?
No, I'm not sure. Do you want to speak in the aloha?
I think if your subject is the aloha, then that would be the public hearing, and we'll have that right after.
Yes.
Okay, yeah. So if you could, I'm just going to put your name over on this other list, okay? That's all right. The next person I'm going to call up on our list is Caleb Sander. And I don't have any other names under public comment, but if you do wish to speak, please come down and line up here, and we can hear you right after Caleb.
My name is Caleb Sanders. I'm the president of the Mount Baker Planned Parenthood Board of Directors, and I'm here to speak about the same thing that Elizabeth was here speaking about, which is the resolution to stand with Mount Baker Planned Parenthood. We are the affiliate of Planned Parenthood that serves Wacom, Skagia, and San Juan counties. We serve a significant portion, it's like 1 in 18 women in the, in our tri-county area, is a Planned Parenthood patient. It's a pretty substantial portion of what we do, and safety is a critical part of that. Women and men who are our patients need to feel safe going to our health centers. Our staff need to be, feel safe going to our health centers. And Washington State has the unique, not unique, but rare distinction of being a state that passed abortion rights by initiative before RV Wade. We have a long history of supporting a woman's right to choose and a woman's right to decide what happens with her own body, and I urge our city council and our city as a whole to stand with Planned Parenthood and make sure women continue to have that right. Thank you.
Thank you, Caleb. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak for public comment? If you could make your way down to the podium, please. If you could just state your name, sir.
My name's Russ Sapienza. I am from Bellingham, Washington. I have recently heard the support for Mount Baker Planned Parenthood, and I would like to say that before you finally decide to choose on accepting a billion-dollar corporation like Planned Parenthood, remember the original intent of Planned Parenthood. And their intent was very simple, to cut down on the number of poor, minority, and disabled people. This goes back to the 1920s, when eugenics was popular. Now, I know that, I'm sure that most of you are supporters of Planned Parenthood, but please, think about what the other side is saying. This isn't just a bunch of religious fanatics, quote unquote. Many of these people, especially, particularly women, have been hurt by abortion. They have been hurt, but not only in physical ways, but also in emotional ways as well. So that's something that we need to speak for them too. We really do. And especially for the future women who will not be born as a result of abortion. So I just thought I'd let you know about that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you could come to the front and please state your name.
My name is Gordon Durham. I'm here to speak on behalf of my community in the Cornwall neighborhood. As many of you, I hope, know or aware, there's been a recent rash of break-ins, some recent discussion at the Bellingham Police Department about a drug house, car prowling, to include my car, among dozens of others in the neighborhood. And we've had some great support from the police department and Dante Alexander, our neighborhood officer, excellent officer, good communication. But I'd just like to kind of just get your support and, as a council, just to, you know, keep fighting for us, whether it's support with additional police officers, patrols, community officers, because after our last, most recent meeting, it's, I wouldn't say it left us hopeful, educated, but there's, you know, with the legal system and the limitations within it, I think probably the better resolution is more support for the police to increase patrols and education in the community. So as a council, just like to thank you for this opportunity to speak and ask that you just continue to advocate for us as a community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. With that, I'm going to close public comment, and we are going to move into our public hearing. So I'm going to turn it over, well, I hear it. The public hearing is on the redevelopment proposal for the real property located at 301 and 315 North Samish Way. And I'm going to turn it over to Darby Coles from Planning and Community Development to give us a little overview. Thank you.
Thank you, Darby Coles from Planning and Community Development Department. Just a little refresher for those of you who haven't necessarily been tracking this step by step. The city issued condemnation proceedings against the Aloha Motel a little more than a year ago, and through a lengthy legal process, which resulted in a settlement, acquired the property last September, and proceeded to clear the site of all structures and clean it up. We visited council back in, I believe, October to discuss surplus and whether or not there was any city purpose for the property, and the council directed staff to move forward with disposing of the property through a request for proposals process. So that request for proposals was drafted with input from some council members, some stakeholders in the community and city staff, to really define what we were looking for for this area. The property is located in the Samish Way Urban Village. It is the subject of an urban village plan, which had a ton of community input into what the future vision for that area is. The request for proposals was opened for a six-week period. It closed on December 15th. We did distribute that pretty far and wide, at least regionally, through the Seattle Daily Journal of Commerce, press releases, direct emails to interested parties, et cetera. And in response, we received two submittals. One submittal was determined to be incomplete. It was reviewed by the Real Estate Review Committee, which is a codified body that consists of the planning director, the finance director, the community and economic development manager, and I was there too, because I am the project manager. And they determined that the one proposal was incomplete, but a second proposal, which was submitted by the Bellingham Housing Authority, responded excellently to the criteria that had been established in the RFP. So although we would have the option to go back out or to solicit other opportunities, the committee felt that this was just right on target with what the community had been asking for through that process. So I'd like to briefly go through that criteria with you, and then talk about next steps. We do have the housing authority here to give an overview of the proposal, and we can answer any questions that you have too about that. One of the, there were three different criteria that, or were the main umbrella for what we were looking against for the proposals. The first one was the capability of the developer, and as you are aware, the housing authority has a longstanding history of successful development in this community. They manage currently over 1,000 units and $200 million in grants, and a very, very diverse funding sources, and we, the city has worked with them many, many times over the years, and has great confidence in their ability to pull off a project, especially some of the newer mixed-use type projects that we've been seeing in downtown. They have an excellent team and excellent financial references that came along with the proposal as well. The second aspect of the RFP was the development concept, and really, instead of creating new specific criteria for just this property, we really worked with the community and looked at the urban village and said, you know, we already did this work to establish the broad criteria, let's make sure that that's the view that we're taking when we look at these proposals. The urban village plan emphasizes high-quality design, pedestrian orientation, utilizing the existing site to create the best layout, and multi-story mixed use, and also, we want to get residential in this neighborhood. The previous zoning, as some of you are aware, didn't even allow for residential. It was the old highway, and it's been oriented that way. So really looking for a mix of residential units and sizes is what the plan, the plan talks about. And this proposal complies with all of those elements. They are proposing commercial uses along Samish Way, also relocating the headquarters of the housing authority to the prominent corner of the property, a range of target populations and sizes of units, which the housing authority will go into in more detail. The other aspect of the proposal is the addition of on-street parking and sidewalks. Right now, it's open, open grass ditches. The plan does require improvement of the streets. And then the housing authority recognized the importance of having on-street parking adjacent to commercial uses. That is a goal of the plan as well, and we want to work with them to see how the city can support that, the development of that corridor into what it needs to be to support that vision. So that's been something that has been in the plan for a while, and this is a great opportunity for us to move that forward, that discussion forward with Public Works, take another look at that corridor, what's appropriate considering changes that have happened since the plan was adopted, and work within the timeframe of the housing authority if this project does move forward to get that moving as well. So we're excited about that opportunity. The housing authority also reflected some of the goals that we had in the RFP of supporting sustainable development. They do meet the evergreen, sustainable development standards. I think that's part of the state funding requirement. And they also are proposing to incorporate some low-impact development stormwater techniques into their, into their central plaza. So the committee felt like they did an excellent job of proposing, at least its initial development concept, it needs some refinement, but it's a slam dunk as far as we were concerned with what, what the plan calls for. And finally, the preferred transaction structure. The housing authority is proposing that the funds that were spent through the Housing Trust Fund to acquire the site be utilized to support the land development costs of the project. So it's a little bit complicated, but the easiest way that I understand it now is that the city would enter into a loan agreement with the housing authority for that amount of money. The project does comply with the criteria and goals of the Housing Trust Fund. Oh, sorry. The housing levy, the Housing Trust Fund is the state money. The local city housing levy is what I'm talking about. So we would enter into a loan agreement with them to keep those funds in the site, and that would be the financial transaction. And the details of how that would work and the timing would be negotiated through this exclusive negotiating agreement. So if council moves to give staff direction to enter into that agreement, it is basically saying that the city's not going to talk to anyone else. We are going to spend a period of time refining the concept, working through the details, developing a purchase and sale agreement, and then staff would come back to council at the point that that legal instrument has been drafted for further discussion and review prior to actually transferring the property. So if there are any questions, I could answer them now, or if you'd like, we could introduce the housing authority and have them provide a little bit more detail.
Let's move on to the housing authority and then take questions after, if that works, okay?
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So how do I advance the slides? Hit the down arrow. Okay, that's it. Good evening. I'm the, I'm John Harmon. I'm the executive director of the Bellingham and Wacom County Housing Authorities. We are two separate agencies, but we work under one administration. We appreciate the opportunity to share our proposal about the former Aloha Motel site. We've been watching this with great anticipation for some time, and we're very delighted we have an opportunity to take a shot at this. Our goal in developing this proposal has been to help bring the community's vision for the Samish Way Urban Village to life. We read the urban village plan, and frankly, we were inspired by it. It was a very good document, a very good plan, and it needs some execution. So we would like to help with that. And be the catalyst for redevelopment in the entire Samish Way corridor. I'd like to give a brief overview of our development concept, and how it aligns with the community's needs and goals. And our principal architect, Neil McCarthy, will go into some elements of the design. And these are some of our major points that are included in our proposal, and we're not going into a great deal of detail here due to our time constraints. But Samish Way is obviously a gateway to our city and has the ability to encompass many of the things that make our city so great. And one of those things is a sense of community. In that spirit, we're proposing a mixed-use, mixed-income, multi-generational development that integrates housing and commercial space in a way that's sensitive to surrounding neighborhoods. The site presents a number of exciting opportunities to set the Samish Way Urban Village vision into motion. BHA is so committed to this vision that we intend to relocate our headquarters with over 30 employees to this site. Truly changing Samish Way requires changing the atmosphere during the day and at night. So we're looking for businesses that will have nighttime operations to keep the street alive, and that's one of our major opportunities. Obviously, our office won't be open at night, but other businesses we hope to bring in would be. And we're looking at a restaurant opportunity that would be kind of a fair share type of thing like they have in Seattle, that would employ people and train people in culinary These are some charts here that show some statistics about affordable housing, and it's not time to go into everything, but I'd like to call your attention to the chart on the far right, which addresses the people who have severe housing needs. And if you add all those up, there are like 10,000 households in Bellingham that have severe housing needs in terms of affording housing. And that's just part of the picture. This is based on this Washington Department of Commerce 2015 Needs Assessment. And there is this need for housing across a broad range of incomes, so it's not just the poorest of the poor, it's also the workforce people, many people who are just barely getting by on minimum wage jobs or jobs close to that level. Just recently, United Way did a survey, and they said the basic survival budget for a family of two adults and infant and a child, a preschooler, is $57,000 a year. A single person working full-time at $11 an hour still falls below 50% of median income, which is poverty level, and can't afford a studio apartment on that kind of income. BHA is committed to the success of our residents, and we found they do best in a diverse environment and with support services. So to that end, we have contracted over the years with the Opportunity Council, with Lydia Place, and with the Northwest Regional Council to give our tenants opportunities Our vision for Samish Way is to do what we have done in the Walton Place complex, which is a combination of workforce housing and people who are differently able, and also people who are coming out of homelessness to have a safe place to raise their children. And we think that's been a great success. We also feel it's important to have safe communities, and to that end, we've always, or always, for the last 20 years, we've had a partnership with the Bellingham Police Department, where we contract for a police detective to work exclusively in our units and investigate small crimes that might not get the priority they otherwise would. And that gives our residents a great sense of security and participation in providing a secure environment for themselves. In order to achieve this vision, we've assembled a skilled and experienced team with an established track record of developing public-private partnerships with private investment and public investments that are designed to last for the long term in providing affordable housing. And the kind of contracts we sign have 40-year terms, and we are committed to keep the housing going for at least 40 years, sometimes 50 years with some of the housing we get. And that's the real advantage I think we offer over a private developer in this kind of housing, is that we are an institution that's devoted to that. Now I wanted to introduce Neil McCarthy of RMC Architects, who will give you some preliminary design points on the project.
Thanks, John.
Okay.
I'm going to take you through a couple of slides here, just to, so you get a visual of how the project's working. The first slide that we have here, on the right-hand side of the page, is Otis Street. On the left-hand side, the larger one, is Samish Way. And then, in behind the project is Laurel. So, it's the triangular lot that's bounded by these three streets. The uses on the site are represented with different colors, colors. So, the yellow out in front is the offices for the Bellingham Housing Authority. And then, the, the bluish color, the purply blue, is the actual residential units. And then, if you see on Samish Way, there's a little bit of orange that's tucked in off Samish Way, that is the commercial at ground floor. So, that's the commercial use. And in between all of the residential blocks, there is the courtyard, and the parking is tucked underneath the courtyard. So, it is structured parking on the site. The other thing to note on this particular slide is the setback on Otis Street, how the building is set back, and that's to respect the residential transition zone across the street. Okay? So, looking at this from the, from, from above, you'll see that it's essentially three different buildings sitting on top of a larger building below. So, Building A is located on, on Otis Street. It's got 76 units in it, and at, at the ground floor level, it's got two-story townhouses. So, that's a nice transition from the larger density towards the residential that we see across Otis Street. Building B is located on Samish Way, and as I said before, it's got the commercial at the base, and it has 40 units in it, 40 residential units. Building C is located along Laurel Street and actually reaches towards the corner at Samish. It has 38 units, and it also has commercial right on the corner at street level. In terms of parking, I had mentioned that the parking is below the courtyard. So, you can see that we have two different access points to the parking. It's a two-level parking garage. Off of Laurel Street, we have access to the top level. And then, off of Otis Street, you'll see there's another access to the lower level. And that's to spread out the impact to the, the neighboring streets. In terms of off-site parking, we will be improving Laurel Street and Otis Street. And as Darby had mentioned, we're also looking at, we'd like to see parking along Samish Way. Not only does that bring more parking to the neighborhood, but it's a good transition, or it's a good buffer for the commercial units along Samish, and it will serve those commercial units. The other thing I'll point out on this slide is that the corners, in particular, the corner at Samish and Otis, there's an opportunity for an urban plaza there. This is a successful location for it. There's lots of eyes on this particular site, and it would, it would be a nice place to do something like that. The last slide I'll show you is the, the project in the neighborhood context. And so, you can see here, Samish Way is on the left side, and we're looking straight down Otis Street. The part I want to point out is that the building, Building B, which is located on Samish, we actually have a story, an extra story above what the current zoning allows. And we feel that this is appropriate with the massing and the density that we're trying to achieve on the site. And the extra story actually matches the height limit just next to, to this project on Samish, so there's precedent in the area. So, we'd like to work with the city to see if there's a process where, where we can bring that extra story to bear. Overall, the project is, we feel is a good example of what your urban village zoning can do. We think that this particular location, right at the pivot point for Samish Way, is a great place to kind of get things started, and we believe this could be a catalyst for future projects. Thank you.
Council members, any questions right now? Councilmember Lilaquist.
This is a small technical question. In the Samish Way Urban Village, do we have floor/area ratio bonuses for affordable housing? And so, they can take advantage of those if they wanted to get height limits? Are you talking over and above that, though?
Yes, there are, there's a bonus menu that the 2.5 base can be exceeded. So, that could be through affordable housing or through the green building piece. Also, I think the original FAR that they've calculated for this includes the parking garage, and so, without including the parking in the FAR, they might not need bonuses to achieve this mass and bulk, but that's something that we'll be looking at in more detail when we get to the, the refinement phase.
Councilmember Hamill.
The proposal mentioned a set aside for 20 units for homeless families, and I believe 20 units for very low-income seniors. I just wanted to get a sense, is that 30% AMI, area median income, or 50% AMI? And is that permanent, then, too?
So, if I understood your question correctly, you're asking about homeless families?
Yeah.
In particular. It, it depends on, most of them are in the very lowest income levels. Occasionally, we'll get people who are a little higher, but most of them are in that level. And typically, we try to use housing vouchers to help supplement their rent, so that rent remains affordable, too.
And you also mentioned work, the availability of workforce housing in this proposal as well, and I just wanted to see what you consider to be workforce housing at, at the area median income?
Yeah, well, workforce housing would probably be people under 60% of median. Technically, 80% of median is less, is low income. But typically, when we're talking about workforce housing, it's under 60% of median because there's so many people in service sector jobs who are making $10, $15 an hour and just barely getting by. So, that's generally the income group we would target there. One of our financing sources requires that we do funding at 60% of median or less. That's probably our, our major single funding source, but we use others. And we also can have some units or none, are above the 60% threshold, and we have to pay for those with other means.
Thanks.
Councilmember Barker.
I have a question for Neil. So, I'm looking at the green space in the center, and you've shown it with the sun coming from one direction. Have you looked at that with the sun coming from every direction and the likelihood of it being actually grass and not moss?
It's a good question. The, the program that we use does have the ability to look at how the sun moves through this, and so, we do want to try to keep a gap there so that the sun hits that as much as possible. You're talking about the courtyard in particular. Yeah, and, and with these urban developments, it, it really depends on how big you can make that courtyard, how wide you can make it as well.
Oh, great.
So, yeah, that is part of the analysis that we do. Yeah.
Yeah, the only other, and I don't know, I think it's an architectural question. I've, I've just seen in some of our corridors where we have a lot of residential and green space that's needing to be shared between lots of different people and animals. And especially along, I live in the Birchwood neighborhoods, along West Maplewood, we have people that, that children don't feel comfortable playing in the green spaces because it ends up being more a place for many of the animals to, you know, relieve themselves. So, I just wondered, I know it's an odd question, but this is really a huge problem along a whole street with the kids not having their green space to play in because it's the animals' green space. So, I was just wondering if you thought about that, if, if there were animals allowed in the space, or I...
I don't know specifically about animals, but...
Put it on your radar as you go down the road, but it's...
Sure. One of the advantages of this space is that there are plenty of eyes on it. It's the SEPTED approach, actually. So, I think that we'll have ways to monitor that, that situation.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Yeah, let's, uh, Dan. Councilmember, oh, okay. Councilmember Murphy.
My previous experience with that is with such brand-new, wonderful developments is that they're managed units, and they're completely managed well. And so, then, it reduces some of the activity that you might see where you don't have managers on your street that would look after that.
Councilmember Hamill.
A question for Ms. Coles. You said that in your presentation that this plan needs some refinement, but as, but was a slam dunk, dunk as far as staff was concerned? I'm just wondering what the refinement was looking like.
The, the main point of refinement is just to make sure that the concept does meet all the development regulations. This is a conceptual level. We want to make sure that the concept is going to work within that box. So, do a little bit more detailed review with our, with our planning staff on the regulatory side, and then, of course, refining the details of the financial transaction and the timing for that.
Thank you.
Councilmembers, anything else? Okay. All right, well, let's proceed then into our public hearing. And again, if I mispronounce your name, please do correct us. When you come up here, if you could state your name. I have 10, 10 people signed up right now. I'm going to give you the first three. If you could, please come down and line up. Paul Moore, Larry Walderman, and Nate Smoyer. Start with you.
I'm good.
You're good? Are you Nate? No?
Sorry.
Uh, the names...
I don't really want to comment.
And your name was?
Paul.
Paul, okay, you're Paul. Okay, so that must be Nate.
My name is Paul Moore. I live at Washington Square, Senior and Disabled Departments in Bellingham, speaking for myself only. I read the proposal by the Bellingham Housing Authority regarding the old Aloha Motel property with interest. Being a former homeowner, professional, and now a 10-year beneficiary of the Housing Authority's services. You already know what a fine agency the Bellingham Housing Authority is. Over the years, I've had the privilege of getting to know some of the commissioners, some of the management, Mr. Harmon, Mr. Thane, Ms. Donnelly, and I do believe it is a privilege. I believe their plans for the Aloha property further demonstrate their concerns and efforts to make Bellingham a better place. I hope that you will consider completing an agreement with them soon, as it will benefit not only the Seehome area, but all of Bellingham and its residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. So, the next names I have on here are Larry and Nate, and I'm sorry, sir, I'm not sure what your name was to take your name off the list.
I'm, I'm making this.
Oh, you can, okay, and you are?
Larry.
You're Larry, okay. And Nate?
Not good.
No, you're good, okay. All right. Thank you. So, the next I have, ooh, we're making this shorter. The next name I have is Mackenzie Dent and James Malnew Elliott and Griffin Crisp.
Good evening, councilmembers. My name's Mackenzie Dent, and I am the Associated Students Local Issues Coordinator at Western Washington University. We at the Associated Students are in favor of the proposal regarding the former Aloha site, and we would like to support the Bellingham Housing Authority in developing a mixed-use and mixed-income development. We endorse this plan for the following reasons. First, we acknowledge the need for additional affordable housing units in Bellingham. Bellingham Housing Authority's commitment to affordable housing will allow redevelopment to satisfy the needs of our low-income, disabled, and homeless community members. Next, we support the parking area design featuring a parking garage on the lowest two stories. Off-campus students recognize the lack of adequate parking in some neighborhoods, and the implementation of sufficient parking spaces at the Aloha site would help prevent the problem from occurring on Samish Way as well. While we support this plan, we also encourage the development of new housing that will benefit students. We hope that the redevelopment of the Aloha site will help to spark new affordable housing units along Samish Way that will meet the needs of students and the rest of the Bellingham community. Western students face significant difficulties finding affordable rentals in Bellingham that are safe, healthy, and properly managed. Students often must sacrifice one or more of these qualities to obtain a unit that aligns with the student's salary. We endorse the plan for affordable housing at Aloha site, but ask for additional housing to benefit students living off-campus. Thank you for your consideration of our comments, and please approve the redevelopment for the Aloha site. Thank you.
Thank you, Mackenzie. James Malnew Elliott?
Thank you. Hello, my name is James Malnew Elliott, and I'm a junior at Western as well. And frankly, I will never forget the first time I came to Bellingham. You know, I came up I-5, I got off 252, and I drove right over Samish Way towards downtown. And along the way, all I saw was fast-food joints and derelict motels in what was essentially an economic dead zone. But that was just my first impression of Bellingham. I've since stayed, you know, almost three years, and I, I now come to see Bellingham is not just that place. But I believe that progress does need to be made, and progress has been made. The elimination of Aloha was a success. Adding the Walgreens, it looks nice, was a good start. Trove Cannabis has really stepped forward with modern and sustainable development in the storefront, but I believe this progress ought to continue with the Bellingham Housing Authority. Their plan to make affordable housing is crucial. And I came to speak as a student of Western who is struggling with a massive amount, or a massive lack of affordable housing for students, not only in the disadvantaged greater community, but the students here as well. And the bottom line is that this opportunity is a good one for students and for the people in this community. Moreover, I come here just simply to voice my support for really starting this progress on Samish Way. There's great potential for not only Western to expand around Seehome Hill, for a great potential for the city as Western expands and become a really national university instead of regional. And the urban village is a good spot for Western to potentially work with the city and the state to really kind of take that next step. And by adding housing, it just kind of gets the ball rolling. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, James. I have Griffin Crisp, then Lisa Anderson, and Tim Hosteller, Hostetler?
Hello, I'm Griffin Crisp. I also work for the Associated Students as the Representation Engagement Programs Director. I'm a sophomore at Western, and I was looking for housing last year, and I found a cute little two-bedroom house. But a lot of the situations that we find ourselves in as, as students is that I don't have a lease. It's kind of an interesting housing situation, but it's affordable and it's right next to campus, and so, I kind of bend to a lot of, I think, rules, regulations that renter, like rent landlords have. So, this, this plan, I think, is really, really great, and I think that as a student, it would be a wonderful opportunity for, to move into, and I think that affordable housing is very needed, especially for our homeless community here in, in, in Bellingham. And so, I'd just like to show my support. Thank you.
Thank you, Griffin.
Good evening, council. Sorry if my voice breaks a little bit. Hopefully, you've read the letter or received the letter from the York Neighborhood. I'm here to speak on behalf of the York Neighborhood Board, and again, Lisa Anderson. We are really thrilled with the proposal, and not only because it's going to provide much-needed affordable housing for multiple residents, but we really appreciate them addressing the parking and also kicking start the urban village plan along with the retail. So far, the meetings we've had as a neighborhood have gone very well. We've made multiple suggestions early on, of which there was some great comments about that, so we're looking forward to the opportunity to work with the development and the actual design plans to make sure that this will be a wonderful example within the Seehome area. Also, you'll notice that in my email, I did address a couple of things beyond this plan, but it's things that the city really needs to address. And part of that is the transportation flow along Samish. It's 35 miles an hour, and, you know, I always think of the game Frogger, even though now we have the lighted intercept, you know, lighted crosswalks, you still have to stop sometimes in the middle in order to get another break to go. 35 miles an hour is way too fast if we're going to be building an urban village and having really close to those sidewalks families living there. So, in the original urban village design, there's some really great suggestions, possible plans, in order to deal with the transportation. From what I hear, it's not in the Transportation Improvement Plan yet, dealing with that whole Samish Way, and I challenge the city to readdress that. I don't think a lot of money really has gone into that area. The lighted crosswalk areas, I believe, was state funding. So, I think if we're, one of the things in the, the planning, that's going through the Planning Commission currently for updating our comp plan, is investing in the urban villages. So, I'm hoping in the three years that it takes for the, the building to come up, at least the first phase, that the city has been able to adequately address what we're going to be doing in order to make that street walkable so that we can get people coming into the commercial areas and feeling comfortable walking that corridor. It's just not the reduction of the crime in that area. It's also the aesthetics that you want to go out in the evening and walk your neighborhood street, go to a coffee shop, and not necessarily drive somewhere else where you feel like you have a sense of community and continuity, and you feel like you can sit at leisure. So, if you ever kind of wonder, go sit at Boomers or Diego's, especially in spring, and see what that traffic is like and kind of wonder whether or not it's a place suitable.
Thank you. Thank you, Lisa. And I have Tim next, then Greg Winter and Chris Erwin. And I have Tim next, then Greg Winter and Chris Erwin.
Tim Hostetler, I'm the Vice President of the Seehome Neighborhood Board, and I thank you very much for being able to present comments. You have in your packet written comments, which were provided earlier. I can be very brief. We are very excited about this project. It's early, there's going to be a lot of decisions made, technically, at the end, obviously, by you folks, but it is great. It's mixed-use. It is looking at parking issues. It is looking at Samish Way. I can add into what Lisa just mentioned that that will be the most important part for the city to bring in money to this project. There has been nothing put into Seehome for, or, excuse me, Seehome, I, let me retract that, Samish Way as a road. A comment, and just an observation that I made, the Planning Department had a number of people, the Housing Authority, the Opportunity Council, the neighborhoods, to walk Samish Way with a consultant. And the consultant had been all over the United States, had done revitalization in urban areas, so she was very well-schooled in what the issues were on Samish Way. We were standing in front of Boomers, and she immediately, as we're just getting ready to go on the walk and listen to her, she turns around and she goes, "Public investment should start right here," and she pointed to the right-of-way. She said, "That's an old state highway? That is not what's applicable and what's needed by this community now." She said it then, and it is really important for this project. We applaud the Housing Authority, they've been excellent. They met with York and Seehome representatives January 27th. That's very good. The proponent goes out right away and says, "I need to talk to the community." And the other thing that is very good is that they looked at it, and as we say in, in Seehome, and, uh, they get it, that this is so important for what will happen from Samish from this point forward. Walgreens is Walgreens, it's no different than a Walgreens anywhere. The cannabis shop, we had hoped that there would be residents on top. As you well know, that's against state law. You cannot have residents above retail marijuana. So, there's been constraints left and right. That's why this is very good, it's very early, and we will be participating all the way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Tim. I have Greg Winter and then Chris Erwin.
Good evening. I'm Greg Winter with Opportunity Council, and thanks for considering the staff's recommendation. I hope you'll support it. This is just tremendous progress that's been made with the, the city, the mayor, the staff, and the council's leadership on the, the blight that was the Aloha motel and is now, you know, we're looking forward to implementing the wonderful urban village plan. I can tell you, add a little bit to what John Harmon said, that a Harvard report came out recently from their joint housing, um, think-tank, and it listed Bellingham out of 381 metro areas, ranking them in order of what percentage of the renter households have a, have a high housing, housing cost burden. We ranked 12th out of 381 in the nation. And last year's Department of Commerce report gave us the distinction of being the most expensive, I'm sorry, the least affordable rental housing market in the state when you compare incomes to rents. So, we desperately need, our families, our working families desperately need more multifamily rental housing, the kind of housing that the Housing Authority has just a, a great track record of delivering, including delivering and redeveloping in existing neighborhoods. So, you know, it's, it's just delightful to look through their proposal and see this really well-thought-out plan. I'd also like to mention, this goes a little bit beyond my area of expertise, but in reading through the material that went along with this proposal, the, the traffic calming and the, um, the street improvements that are needed to help make the new residents of the Seehome neighborhood, help make those families safer, and the additional, uh, commercial activity that's gonna happen, make those shoppers safer, I think that's something that I hope the city will support. So, thanks for consideration, and I hope you'll take action tonight.
Thank you, Greg. Chris Erwin?
Wait, I'm-
Okay, is there anyone else who would care to speak for, for the public hearing? Please come to the podium.
Hi, my name is Sterling Fisher. I have a little shop over in the area called Sterling Auto Motive. Used to go to these meetings that were being, talking about this urban village eight years ago at the Elks Club up the street. Followed, followed those meetings and somehow fell off the minutes and kind of lost track until I just heard about this meeting, and I wanted to attend and see what's going on. It sounds like, is this a done thing then with the Affordable Housing Agency moving into that location? Is that a yes? Or no? I'm, I'm sorry, I'm kind of stepping into the middle of this.
Uh-
Is it, is, is the building going up there? Is that decided that is what's going on?
Our public hearing tonight is to vote whether the council will proceed to accept the bid.
Okay, thanks. And I don't mean to waste anyone's time.
Did I say that correctly?
I apologize, but I need to get a grasp on that. I, I don't know if it's the best thought-through. I, I live also above the Elks Club on Samish Ways. In the mornings, I wait quite a while to get down to the light so I can cross over the freeway and then get to work a few blocks down the street. They have 500 units going in at Fred Meyer's now, which is gonna bottleneck, it's already bottlenecked at that intersection going over the freeway. It's really gonna create a super nightmare for Lakeway and for especially that freeway going over, with that 500 units going in, figure 700 cars, at least 500 a day added to that strip, in and out, not just one time, visiting, weekends, whatever. But that's gonna nightmare, uh, uh, Lakeway. So, that's not gonna be user-friendly for people wanting to use that off and on-ramp. And the congestion already at the Samish Crossing is, is bad, but that's gonna make it intolerable, and then we're talking about putting this project in down there as well. That stretch right there where I work, I hear ambulances and fire trucks shooting that strip all the time. And I mean, at least once a week, three times a week, twice a day sometimes. I've done my share of, you know, starting the breathing, stopping the bleeding, and treating for shock out front of my shop many times, uh, due to the situation, the drug area that is around there. Back on track. I think the Affordable Housing Agency is a wonderful, wonderful organization. I just think, like any business, location, 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 right? And putting, adding that, the parking when the head shop went in, I'm sorry, the marijuana shop went in across the street there, now Diego's Restaurant right there gets an additional seven cars parked in there. I get them parking in my parking lot, and I have to shoe them out 'cause I'm, I'm short parking too. I've got 20 spots, but they fill quick. And, and people cross that road a lot right there. It's, it's kind of a busy thing going on. Is that my marker to get offstage? I'm not for it. I'm, I'm all for that. I'm not for putting it there at all. I think it's a disaster.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, is, uh, please come ahead and tell us your name, and if there's anyone else who cares to speak, please come down.
So, I'm, I'm not on your list, but my name is-
That's okay.
Christopher Fast.
Okay.
And I'm a local owner as well as property manager in the area. And so, I kind of had some of the similar concerns that other people had vocalized. I was all for the Aloha motel coming down, perfect first step, and then saw this proposal, haven't really had a chance to dig into it, maybe because I haven't gone out and found the materials yet. But I learned a little bit tonight, so that was all pretty interesting, other than that original, uh, whatever it was called, this thing that was sent out.
The notice of the hearing.
So, we definitely have a lacking of affordable housing in Bellingham. And, uh, you know, it kind of comes back to the original intention of Section 8. I, I won't even go down that, that path right now, 'cause I'll probably run out of time here pretty soon. But there were some things that I'd like to reiterate, is the parking, the potential of, um, I, I guess it'll depend upon the mixed-use and the types of shops that come in underneath, but I would hope, and I'm not sure how much control that City Council has, but the types of shops that would be going in underneath, I, I like the idea, somebody had mentioned a restaurant going in, but instead of a bunch of 7-11s down underneath those, I, I don't know how you can control what types of retail or what types of shops go in. I just heard somebody mention that you can't put marijuana sale underneath residential, so that's a positive thing right there. But I'd hate to see that commercial space or that retail space turn into 7-11s and a bunch of other things that, um, you know, sort of degrade that neighborhood, or maybe keep it where it is instead of upgrading it. And of course, traffic, that was mentioned earlier, the amount of parking there. I know that when people are coming down Otis Street, um, and you've got that curve at the end of Samish right there across the street from Boom, Boomers, between Boomers and the marijuana shop that's there, coming down Otis, it's very difficult to get out onto Samish Way, uh, down Otis to be able to turn left. And so, it just seems like the whole traffic situation hasn't been thought out, especially with 154 units, and maybe they have thought it out, maybe I haven't seen that. But with 154 units in there, there's gonna be a lot of vehicular traffic coming and going and causing a lot of bottlenecks in a couple of those different areas there. But, uh, and also, I was wondering if Housing Authority, how they manage some of their other, uh, developments at night. But, uh, so yeah, I guess, management at night, types of retail and shops that go in, and traffic being a big one. Thank you.
Thank you, Christopher. Is there anyone else who cares to speak at the public hearing? Last chance. All right, we're gonna close the public hearing. Thank you all very much for your comments. These are all very valuable, it helps everyone see a broader picture, so I appreciate that. And, um, the will of the council, do we want to have a vote this evening, or do we want to bring this to committee?
I'm ready to vote.
Yeah.
I'm willing to make a motion that we authorize the, the contract. I, this, in my mind, and I lived there, a couple of blocks from it, and have watched this for a long time, and I've worked with the Housing Authority and seen their developments all over town, and I know they do a really good job. And this proposal looks exactly like what we've talked about since we started talking about the urban village on, on Samish, of how do we get quality housing, and how do we get retail and other things and get that started? And I think this is the thing that will really help kick-start, kick-start that. And so, I'm prepared to vote on it tonight. Uh, if you, for most of the comments we heard, I mean, this is a pretty glowing, uh, uh, public hearing in terms of people that have looked at this issue for a long time, the neighborhood, uh, many of the neighborhood people who have looked at and, and studied the, the idea of the urban village and what needs to happen, and, and so, I'm willing to vote on it. So, I'll make that motion.
Making that motion? Okay. Second. Uh, council members, comments, discussion? Councilmember Hamill, then Lillquist, and Barker.
So, we've talked about this before, about the lack of affordable housing in Bellingham, and one of the presenters tonight talked about the dollar value of what a family needs to earn, about $57,000 to be able to afford a home here. It's, it's not about, just about the income that it takes to, to afford a housing, it's also about the, um, the vacancy rate which we have in our community, which is tremendously low. We have, in, between 2009 and 2011, there was a dearth of multifamily housing unit applications for, for building, and now we're starting to see this uptick here in building. So, I'm, I'm supportive of this. We need workforce housing, we need low-income, affordable housing for low-income families. And, um, and folks, we have a, what's called a silver tsunami coming our way. This is our aging boomer population who will need housing. And, and we have to accommodate for that. And we do have, um, we have a proposal for 80 units of affordable senior housing called Eleanor Place in the old Wilson Toyota Triangle. Uh, we, we're taking these, um, these small steps here, but this is another small step into Councilmember Bornman's point about the jump-starting Samish Way. Uh, this, this type of proposal, this type of project, to me, seems to be ideal. It's very contained, it's a, by a known housing developer with a track record, so I'm gonna be supportive of this.
Councilmember Lillquist, then Murphy and Barker.
Thanks, Pinky. Um, the, this area, the Samish Way Urban Village, was, as Ms. Coles indicated, discussed thoroughly over a, a long process. The process started by the neighborhood and outside of the city. It then became an official city process. As you say, there were meetings at the Elks Club, I was there too. What I guess I would like to say is two things. One, this really is exactly what many of us, myself included, had hoped would go into the Samish Way Urban Village, that one by one, the low-density or poorly-used or sometimes just, um, like, like your Aloha, very negative use is replaced by a larger and more beneficial use. So, this is exactly what I think was anticipated. But to go to your point about traffic, and yours too, sir, this is what was anticipated. If you look at the plan, we're anticipating over the next few decades, many buildings of equal scale and sometimes larger, and that will come with traffic impacts. And those traffic impacts have been anticipated and planned for. I'm not saying traffic won't get worse, but there's no way to have urban development without some of those impacts. The goal when the urban village is fully developed is that it, it will work as a functional unit, and there will be more foot traffic and fewer cars for every person moving through the area. There will be cars, but there will be just as many people moving on foot or maybe by transit, which right now is not high-frequency down that corridor. But in a couple decades, when it's built up along the entire length, then that could be an area where people can reliably take buses. So, what I, what I guess I'm saying is that this is only the first step, but if we're successful, there'll be more of the same, in both the good sense and in the not-so-good sense. This is what urban development looks like. This is the first piece of it. So, I, I'm gonna be strongly supporting it because this is the vision that was adopted by the council several years ago, and I do support that vision.
Councilmember Murphy.
I just wanted to say that the concepts for this project, to me, are supporting all of the dreams that I've had for Samish Way. And just to articulate briefly what those dreams consist of, I have wanted so many different incomes to be living on Samish Way. I've wanted people to have affordable options to live on Samish Way. I wanna see all walks of life walking on Samish Way to make it safer. At the same time, I have dreamed that there would be commercial viability with businesses at the street level or even a level up from that, that would actually wanna locate and help with the neighborhood's safety even more. I think Samish Way is the area where, obviously, the neighborhoods that we heard from tonight will support such development, because this is a really important pizza slice in our city. We can use this as an opportunity to show what modern-day affordable housing is, so we can help spread that throughout our community, and this is a desperate need in our city. And at the same time, I just think it's our opportunity to show the total potential of what Samish Way should be and what it could be. So, I'm so happy to be supporting this.
Councilmember Barker.
So, I have a, just a couple of questions. We had set forward, or the previous council had set forward, different incentives for this area, and we had stated that kind of once the ball gets rolling, then those incentives, you know, go away and, and we allow that. But I'm interested in the, I'm assuming they might not need the multifamily incentive, so I'm hoping that that's something that we can leave for a future to, to continue to spur more if they weren't to use the incentives for that first that were intended.
I think staff would propose keeping the multifamily tax exemption program in place in Samish Way. I think the Housing Authority will probably seek an exemption from the state, as they typically do, not pay property taxes for affordable housing or the lower-income housing. But we want all types of developers to be interested in Samish Way, and so, this, that incentive that you're speaking to would be more advantageous to a for-profit developer-
Yeah.
-that's paying property taxes, so we should be keeping that. Now, the BNO tax exemption that we proposed for this area, or it's in place, could go for a restaurant, a restaurant new to Bellingham or a new place, so the Housing Authority can be looking at some of those other tools for this development.
Okay. And I had just one more? That's okay?
Sure. So, I, I really do wanna commend the Seehome and the York Neighborhood Associations-
for, for one, all the work that they do and advocacy, but also the acceptance. And I'm going to do a little lecture here for all the people listening in all the neighborhoods out there, but we, we have said, we don't want to sprawl, we want to infill. That's going to impact our traffic. It's going to. We're going to have to find different ways to utilize public transit, and we have to accept that. If not, then we need to have a different discussion whenever we're talking about UGAs. And, and as far as affordable housing, we passed it. We passed it. The money's there, and so we have to find more projects that go across our neighborhoods and not just expect a few neighborhoods to accept the density. So I really hope that you guys are quite a model, and I think a few of our other neighborhoods, and I would hope that other neighborhoods out there are seeking ways that they too can come forward and say, you know, we have space and we're able to accept populations that might be a little bit different than the ones that we currently have. So I, I'm just really, really thankful of that. And I do want to keep it on the, the planning's radar, hopefully with schools, that this is happening, and I think it might happen a lot faster than we expected, and with downtown too, as we're seeing, as far as residential. York already has to have their children bust, and, and that makes it, you know, a little, we didn't want to buy in the New York neighborhood because I wanted to be able to walk my kids to school, and that wasn't going to be an option. So, so we, we have, I think we're going to have room for possibly another elementary. And I just hope that those conversations are happening with the school districts, so as this density goes, we at least have determined a spot, and if it's necessary, because it seems counterintuitive to me, to push for infill, to push for cleaner, greener, and then to get our kids on a bus and ship them out somewhere. So those, I just hope that's on the radar.
Councilmember Knutson.
Yes, I think we've gotten lucky again. You know, John Harmon has a lot of history here, I've known him for 20-some years. I remember, Terry, you remember when Walton Beverage left State Street? What were we going to do with that old building? It really didn't look that great anymore, and they left town, and you drive by there now, you see what's in there, Housing Authority. And the Aloha, I remember that when it was first built, I was just a little kid, and that was the hotel to stay in back in the 60s when it first opened. And then Samish Way became something that it's going to change away from. So I think we drew a good card here. I think they'll put up a classy place, and it'll be better for that area. And as Dan said, hopefully there's more to come, because when I first got on council, the first, one of the first tours I took was to look at what facilities the Housing Authority had. Well, now it's a lot longer trip, so it's, it's been a great experience. So I'm not, I know, but people have traffic concerns, those are valid, but rest assured, they will put up a class place, it'll be well-managed, it won't be a problem area, and it'll be great. So thank you for coming forward.
Thank you. Anyone else? Well, for me, I think that one of the biggest challenges we have in our city is affordable housing. So any, but anything that moves us, and this is a really positive move in the right direction with a great agency, so nothing's ever perfect, but this is pretty darn close. So with that, I'm going to say that we have a motion in front of us, and a second, and this is to authorize the contract with the Bellingham Housing Authority to proceed in the, for the property on, located at 301 and 315 North Samish Way. Did I say that correctly, Peter? Did I include everything I needed on that one? Are we all good?
Authorized contract.
So again, that motion is to authorize the, for us to engage in that contract with the Bellingham Housing Authority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. And that was the conclusion of our public hearing. Thank you, everyone, for participating.
I, I do have a question. No, it's regarding the Public Works, if we're saying that now we...
Yeah.
We know how to empty a building. Might want to just take a couple-minute break until everybody gets out of here.
So we're officially taking a two-minute break here and allowing everyone to circle out, and we'll reconvene in a moment.
No, when, the tip will be coming in, what month is this? January, February? It'll be coming soon, the six-year transportation tip. It'll be coming forward, so that would be the time to, when it comes forward, we can add some tracks, do whatever we want to do. Yeah, that'd be the right time. Because that's what they'll tell you. Yeah. Oh, yeah, it is.
We're going to reconvene and go into our committee meetings. This afternoon, we held our committee meetings, and our first one was Public Works, Public Safety, which is chaired by Terry Borneman.
Thank you, Pinky. We had one item before our committee today, and it's a resolution regarding the safety of Planned Parenthood patients, staff, and facility. There's a concern about the recent violence against Planned Parenthood offices and clinics around the country, and this resolution aims to affirm the safety of all Planned Parenthood patients, their staff, and facilities in Bellingham. And although it's a little lengthy, I'm going to take the time to read this through so people have an idea about why we're voting on this and what it's about. Whereas the Mount Baker Planned Parenthood provides health services to over 5,000 women, men, and teens in Watcom County each year, 60% of whom are at or below the federal poverty level, and whereas all the, of these people, along with the Planned Parenthood staff, deserve to receive and provide services in a safe environment, and whereas Mount Baker Planned Parenthood education and outreach programs deliver sexual and family planning education to nearly 3,000 teens, women, and men each year in Watcom County with programs including teen council, teen council peer education programs, parent and child education program, evidence-based sexuality education programs in schools, and whereas over 90% of the care that Planned Parenthood provides nationwide is preventative, and approximately one in five women have relied on a Planned Parenthood Health Center for care in her lifetime, and whereas Mount Baker Planned Parenthood is the largest provider of reproductive healthcare services in Watcom County, and whereas Mount Baker Planned Parenthood has served women, men, and teens in Watcom County for 46 years, and provides access to critical, nonjudgmental healthcare services, including birth control, life-saving cancer screening, HIV screening and counseling, STI testing and treatment, well-women exams and safe and legal abortions, and whereas Mount Baker Planned Parenthood provided 9,910 STI tests and treatments, 860 HIV tests, and 498 breast exam to its patients in Watcom County in 2014, and whereas Planned Parenthood Health Centers around the country served 3 million patients in 2014, approximately 60% of whom received Medicaid and other services funded by Title X, and whereas Mount Baker Planned Parenthood healthcare professionals offer safe, affordable, and convenient health services at three health centers' locations throughout Watcom, Skagit, and San Juan Counties, and whereas some Planned Parenthood Health Centers around the country offer programs intended to help patients contribute to life-saving and cutting-edge research, seeking treatment for a range of diseases and conditions affecting millions of people, including diabetes, Parkinson's disease, Alzheimer's disease, heart's disease, stroke, and organ failure, and now therefore be it resolved that the Bellingham City Council stands for the safety of Planned Parenthood patients and staff and supports Planned Parenthood's mission to provide critical and life-saving healthcare services to women, men, and teens throughout Watcom County. Our committee unanimously recommended approval, and I so move.
Second? Any comments, discussion, council? Councilmember Lillquist?
I'm just going to repeat some of my comments this afternoon. To me, my focus is on the safety of, of each and every person and each and every agency. I don't see this as a particular, I mean, I, I appreciate the work of Planned Parenthood does, but I'm not voting for this because of who Planned Parenthood is, but because of who any agency is, or any person, that, that we stand up for public safety. And if anyone gets threatened, I think it behooves us, or we are, are responsible for speaking up in favor when anyone is threatened. And unfortunately, Planned Parenthood has been threatened recently in other communities, and I don't want to see that here.
I couldn't agree with you more. There's no place for this in any organization we have in this community, so...
Anyone else? Okay. For me, this is very personal. I believe that it is our responsibility as city council to make sure that our citizens are safe, but I am particularly proud to do this for Planned Parenthood, because I think they deserve our support for all the things they do for our community. So with that, I'd like to take a vote, unless anyone else has any other comments? Okay, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And that, eh, motion is unanimous, seven-zero. Thank you very much, and we will move to our next item. Our next committee meeting was Parks and Recreation, which is chaired by Councilmember Michael Lillquist.
Thank you very much. The Parks Committee had one item for us today, it was information-only briefing from city's staff, it was an update on the Squalicum Corridor, Beta Baker Trail. The Parks and Rec staff this afternoon provided an update on that corridor project. The Orchard Place to Irongate segment will be bid on and constructed in this year. There were maps that were shown in this afternoon, I suggest you go online if you want to figure out which portion of the trail will be worked on. The trail's proposed to eventually run all the way from Roder Avenue to the city limits, and then connect in actually to the larger countywide NOOCZAC loop trail system. Not on the agenda was actually something was discussed, which is a continuation of the same trail system through Cornwall Park itself. That new connection is, was just being discussed, and it wasn't really part of the presentation, but it's the next segment. I guess I want to mention one thing I, I forgot. The trail segment we're talking about actually goes underneath I-5, and so there is, there's actually a creek and a road, and there's space under there, an old railway underpass that will now have trail segments running through there, as well as the new road connection. I-5 tends to kind of cut our city in half, and studies have shown that for walking and bicycling in particular, I-5 is a barrier, and this is a way of getting around that barrier by providing a really nice public trail. That was for information-only, end of Parks report.
Okay, and from that, we went to committee of the whole. We had five items before us today. Our first presentation was by our Planning Director, Rick Sepler, who gave us a review of the Planning and Community Development Department's 2016 key initiatives. He also gave us a little review of 2015, which included a new software system and the implementation of their rental registration, and those two feats alone were pretty tremendous. There was a long list, but even those two, we, we are very proud of the work that was done in 2016, sorry, 2015. For 2016, a couple key initiatives, they, all the entire information is available for in the packet, but just to review, we talked about housing production and preservation, emergency housing, redevelopment of city properties, development incentives, the lean process improvements, implementing the rental registration inspection program, impact fee deferral, and permitting software replacement. So our planning department has a big year in front of us for 2016, and that was for The next item in front of us was a extension and renewal of the emergency ordinance creating intern zoning for the establishment of facilities producing, processing, and retailing recreational marijuana. The way the law works, I believe we've had to do this emergency ordinance four times? I think four? Okay, quite a few, because the laws have been changing dramatically as this, as this process moves along. So there will be a public hearing for this, but also, we did have a healthy discussion in regards to the, the changes in the law, which will happen in this, this summer, include the, I don't know if merging is the right word, between medicinal marijuana and recreational marijuana, which is going to change some of our zoning, et cetera, in the city of Bellingham. So we had a little discussion about that today, and we're going to delve in that to a little further, and in our, when we have the hearing for this, which I believe has to be 60 days after the vote, we'll have a further discussion on this. If there's anyone else who wants to add anything on that, please let me know. We did pass the emergency ordinance, and it went in front of us, seven-zero. Do we vote again on that this evening? Okay, all right, so, anybody want to move that?
So move.
Second? Second? Okay. We have a motion in front of us to approve the emergency ordinance for the intern zoning establishment of facilities producing and processing and retailing recreational marijuana. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Pinky? I just want to follow up with a quick question. Brian Heinrich, Mayor's Office. Councilmember Barker asked about revenue that the city can expect to see based on, well, essentially reconciled medicinal and recreational marijuana during the last legislative session. The Liquor Cannabis Board estimates that Bellingham can expect to see about $102,000 every year. That's part of the disbursement from the state. It's a, there's a formula that essentially is used based on per capita. So there's, generally speaking, about $6 million generated statewide, and then that's distributed based on your use by per capita. We also anticipate there will be additional BNO tax revenue and perhaps some additional sales tax revenue, but we don't have those figures yet.
Is that 102, is that for the expected 12 that we would have, or the current six?
That's the current six.
Okay.
Thank you, Brian. The next item in front of us today was a vote to authorize the mayor to enter into the modification to the inter-local agreement for facilities within the waterfront district between the Port of Bellingham and the city of Bellingham. We did have a presentation from Tara Sedine and Ted Carlson to look at what the actual changes would be, and the committee voted, and our vote this afternoon was seven-zero, and we need to vote to approve.
Second.
You have a motion in front of us? Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. Our fourth item in front of us was a resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to submit an application requesting funding from Watcom County's Economic Development Investment, EDI program, to partially fund the construction of arterial streets in the waterfront district. We had a little presentation from Ted Carlson, and the committee unanimously approved, passed the resolution. Councilmember Lillquist?
Recommend approval of the resolution.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero. The last presentation we had today in committee was Watcom Reads, and this is put on by the Bellingham Library. This is a free book that is given to people throughout Bellingham, it is for us to share. And the book this year is called Tale for the Time Being by Ruth Ozeki, and she will be coming, thank you, Terry, she will be coming to Bellingham to do several presentations, March 3rd. There will be discussions March 4th, there will be an evening at the Mount Baker Theater, and March 5th, there will also be presentations and an interview at the Jansen Art Center in Linden. These are all free for the public to attend, and if you are looking for more information, there are posters throughout and also on the Bellingham Library to give you information. And she did give us all a book to read, so we all have an assignment. And that is the end of our committee of the whole from today, and we'll move on to the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes in front of us.
Move approval to January 25th meeting minutes?
I did have, I did notice that there was one spelling error on a name under the Puget Sound Energy. Sound Energy. The gentleman's name is Bob Stolarzki, so it's just the spelling, but other than that, I think the minutes are good. Okay? And I can give you that correct spelling if you like. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes approved unanimously. Older new business. We will start with Councilmember Barker.
So I was interested in, we did have a public comment regarding, and I did get several letters, the crime issue. I know in Birchwood, my neighborhood, in particular, running all the way through Cornwall, Columbia, it's kind of escalated, and just wondered if we had any updates on where we were at with that.
Sure. I think first I would say it's, there's an ongoing investigation, so there's not a great deal I can discuss, but I would reference, I was appreciative of the gentleman's comments about MPO Dante Alexander. And in talking with Chief Cook, what the MPOs suggested is that, it's a good reminder about minimizing your chances of being a victim. So things like, when they do their patrols, they see things like garage doors left open or bikes that aren't chained up, and it's just a reminder that those are good practices to, to not become a victim, to make sure that your areas are well-lit, your doors are locked, and things of those nature. But they'll continue to work that investigation, and I'm certain we'll see some results.
Councilmember Knutson.
I was at that meeting that the gentleman referenced, and there was about 50 people. That was a good turnout. Dante Alexander, his crew do a great job of educating people, talking to people. Of course, they don't get the answer they want when they want it fixed right away. We fully understand that, but they've got a good program of how they go in there, and there is a lot of crime in, in one of the streets. I won't mention the street, but they're going in there, and they're doing a lot of surveillance. They're doing a lot of checking around, they're driving through there, and hopefully in the next few weeks or months, it'll turn around. But most of the people that came felt a little better than they did before they came, because they were getting pretty excited and worked up. But he is quite the, quite the officer. He's really a go-getter, and he goes full-bore into something. So hopefully they'll get that cleaned up.
Councilmember Murphy.
One of the things that I would like to work with administration on in relation to this topic is there is a renowned neighborhood organizing consultant. And what he has done is he comes into your community, and he talks to neighborhood leaders and just general community members about everything that neighbors can do to ensure that their neighborhood is safe. His fundamental message is, do not wait for the city, because there are so many things that you can do to make your neighborhood safe. So I would love it if Mr. Campbell could come and do some work with all of our neighborhoods here, not to put the pressure on the neighborhoods, but to show how we can all work together on these different initiatives, because this is what has worked to clean up so many streets in Tacoma, and I would love if it could help clean up streets here.
Councilmember Liloquist.
Switching topics, I'll bring up what I brought this afternoon, or the new business, which is this afternoon, we moved to committee next meeting to discuss an action which may be completed tomorrow night by the Watcom County Council. They've introduced a resolution and a statement that they're on the jail and justice issues across Watcom County, and they invited the tribes and all the cities of Watcom County to consider joining them in that statement. We don't know if they'll actually pass that tomorrow night. They may just introduce it and pass it in two weeks or whatever. So after thinking, I guess we just modify the understanding. If the Watcom County Council passes it, then we should introduce it here to discuss in the next meeting.
Thank you. Anyone else? I just wanted to mention that last Wednesday, here in City Hall, we had a pretty exciting day. We had a media event, and Mayor Linville proclaimed 2016 the energy year here in Bellingham. And so this is pretty exciting for us, especially in our continuation and support of the Georgetown University Energy Prize, and trying to encourage everyone to sign up at bellinghamenergyprize.org. So you can watch that, if I'm sure you want to see it. It is available on our website, so we had a great day last Wednesday. Anyone else for older new business? No? All right, well, we'll turn it over to our mayor's report, then.
I thank you. The mayor is going to, for your information, reappoint Teresa Van Halen and John Gargit to the Bellingham Sisters Cities Board, and then she's looking for your approval for a reappointment of Sue Lobland to the Museum Foundation Board.
Move to approve.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Thank you. And the mayor would like to appoint Lisa Anderson to the Planning and Development Commission.
Move approval. Everybody, everybody.
Second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero.
Great, thank you.
The audience, too, she hasn't left yet.
Congratulations.
Had to make sure.
Congratulations, welcome.
Anything else? That's good. Okay, we'll go to consent agenda.
Move approval.
Second.
I took an extra nap this afternoon, so I...
All right, we have a motion and second in front of us for the consent agenda. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries seven-zero, and we'll go to final consideration of ordinances.
Agenda Bill 21114. An ordinance amending multiple sections of the city's critical areas ordinance, BMC 16.55. In order to incorporate state-required updates, improve protection of certain wetlands, and improve clarity and the efficiency of administering, administering the regulatory provisions, and amending the city's administration of development regulations in order to extend the timelines of certain critical area permits, and to include minor critical area permits and other director decisions issued under BMC 16.55 as type-one land-use decisions.
Move approval. Third. Second.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Liloquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven-zero. Agenda Bill 21117. An ordinance of the city of Bellingham, Washington, regarding water service installation fees, amending section 15.08.220 of the Bellingham Municipal Code.
Move third and final. Second.
Michael Liloquist.
Aye.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven-zero. Agenda Bill 21120. An ordinance amending the 2016 budget, increasing revenue by $1,322,507, and appropriating related expenditures in the Storm and Surface Water Fund as a result of an intergovernmental loan and grant from the State of Washington Department of Ecology for the Squalicum Creek Reroute Project Phase III.
Move third and final.
Second.
Roxanne Murphy.
Aye.
Pinky Vargas.
Aye.
April Barker.
Aye.
Terry Bornham.
Aye.
Dan Hamel.
Aye.
Jean Knutson.
Aye.
Michael Liloquist.
Aye.
Ordinance passes, seven-zero.
Okay, well, thank you all for joining us. Our next meeting will be February 22nd here at 7:00 PM. Until next time, good night.